Good evening and welcome to the December tenth regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had one meeting and that was the November thirteenth regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November thirteenth meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Seeing that, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved. We have several groups here tonight for recognition. First up, Rick.
We'd like to call up John Keprios. John is taking on a new career called retirement. And John Keprios has been just a wonderful partner to the Edina Public Schools, but also just a great leader for our community in the areas of park and recreation. Thirty-five years of service, John. Tell us a little bit about some of the things you remember about those first years and just some of those highlights of things that were big then and are just really become part of our community.
Well, thank you. And first of all, thank you for letting me be here tonight and for recognizing me. I started in nineteen seventy-seven. Like I said, it's been thirty-five years. One of the first things that I got accomplished that was near and dear to my heart was we created an adaptive recreation program. So, parents had a program for their children whereas they used to provide their own services. And ever since then, it's kind of all history. I think you've seen what's out there. Some things we're very proud of in working with the school are the Hornets Nest is the most recent one. The two, what we call the City Gems, the one then next to the Community Center, the other one next to the Southview Middle School. And it's just been a great ride.
So, when you look back also and you find that ride's over, what are some of the things that you're gonna miss and the things that you really appreciate about being part of the Edina community?
Yeah. Well, actually, you know, I grew up in Edina. In fact, I went to elementary school, which doesn't exist anymore, Cahill. I went to Southview, was a junior high when I went here. And then I went to this building that used to be a high school. But the things I'm gonna miss most, that's an easy one, that's gonna be the people. The people I work with, the people I work for, and the people that I serve, both on a volunteer basis and those that were my bosses over the years. Got some great volunteers and you've got some of them right here at your table. Chairman Randy Meyer was on our park board and Kathy Sella currently working with the park board. And Edith's got her daughter serving on the park board. So, there's a lot of connection there. But that's been the most rewarding part for me, all those cherished relationships that I was able to develop over the years. Just a fabulous community, a well-educated and very thankful, grateful community. There's a lot of great strokes in my business. I don't think the city assessor hears those things, but in park and recreation, we should.
John Keprios, on behalf of the school board, the entire school district of Edina, we thank you for your years of service and wish you the best in the future.
Thank you so much.
We have a scholar we want to recognize tonight, Lauren Grofsky. Lauren, if you could come forward, please. Lauren is a twelfth grader at Edina High School and we wanted to get up early because we know we've got studies that we need to take care of, of course. But Lauren was one of those students, our third student, I believe it is, who received a perfect composite score of thirty-six on her ACT test. When you open that envelope and you look at that score, what were the first thoughts that came to you?
I actually found out online. They came out at midnight and I stayed up.
Old fashioned.
I stayed up till midnight, I opened it, and I ran into my parents' room. I woke everyone up and I was screaming and yelling. I got in a lot of trouble, but, you know.
It was worth it, wasn't it?
I was pretty excited, yeah.
So, talk about some of the coursework you're taking this year and how you feel like it's preparing you for your future.
I'm taking a lot of AP classes this year, kind of upping the ante this year, to kind of get prepared for college because I know, you know, there's a lot of hard work and I'm just getting ready my study skills and stuff like that.
So, we've got a program called Young Scholars, which is taking some of our youngest students and getting them into more of a scholarship arena. As one who've been through the system in Edina now, what is some advice you have for some of our youngest students to help them make sure they get the best and maybe also find someday getting that perfect score? What are your thoughts or ideas you can share?
I think definitely to push yourself. I know there's a lot of available curriculum and classes that people can take at Edina and some people don't take advantage of that. But the education is so good that people need to take advantage of it as much as they can.
And plans for next year?
I'm not sure yet. I hear from my first college on Saturday, so we'll see.
Fantastic. I'm gonna ask Chair Randy Meyer to recognize you for him with certificate. Lauren, congratulations. We now have our repeaters here tonight. It's our repeaters of state championships. We'd first like to call on the Edina High School girls' swimming and diving team and their coaches, if they could come forward and maybe just get a nice line. You guys have done this before, so you know exactly what you're supposed to do here. Coach Mace? Three times. What made this season a little bit more special than the other ones when you look back?
I guess I would have to say the balance in our team and the fact that we came into the meet, we were sitting tenth. And the kids swam with what we call passion and they just excelled every time they got in the pool. We dove well. Every kid who got up on the block mattered and they felt like they mattered and they just always came through from teammates.
So, how do you, in a team of, which is, you know, pretty much viewed as individuals, how do you build that team spirit? Because you could definitely see that in the girls', young women, I should say, as they were working. What are some things that you really work on as a coach to try to encourage that team feel?
I stay out of the way. These are high school girls and they do their thing to create the team atmosphere. I don't really think I do a whole lot. I think John would agree with that. We stay out of the way because they have their own idea what team should be and we really put it on them, especially the senior leaders.
And how many years have you been with the team?
I've been here since ninety-nine.
John, how about you? How many years with the team and maybe a memory that you've got as you look back on the season?
This is my third year and, boy, I don't know which memory I could possibly pick out. Actually, I'm, you know, I've had one diver that I've coached for the past three years and she's gonna be leaving this year, so that's kind of a very bittersweet moment, so it's about it.
Well, I'm gonna pass the mic down right to the end. If we could give a name, a grade, and if you're graduating as a senior, kind of maybe your plans for next year a little bit. How's that sound? Okay?
I'm Cece Holmquist and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Erica Evans and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Gracie Taylor and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Rachel Whitmer and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Kate Morton and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Heather Ladkey. I'm a senior and I'll be attending Dartmouth College next year.
I'm Madeline Eden. I'm a senior and I'm still undecided on my plans for next year.
I'm Yasmeen Almak. I'm a senior and I'll be diving at Princeton next year.
I'm Olivia Anderson and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Emma Whitmer and I'm a sophomore.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And once again, we wanna look at that repeater. While we have a three-year, we've got a sixteen-year in our girls' tennis program. We wanna recognize our girls' tennis program if they could come forward today. They're not in full force, but we're gonna make sure we find out about them if we can.
How many times can they come? Get tired of it.
So, sixteen years.
Yes, national record.
National record. So, did you feel that pressure going into the season knowing what it was gonna be like?
Yeah, I think everyone kind of knew. It was just kind of like an unspoken, like nervousness. But I think we obviously stepped up and our coach, Steve, really helps a lot to kind of calm our nerves and make sure that the pressure's on us to play well, not to win.
And you're seniors here?
I am.
And you have plans for next year? And is tennis part of those plans or what's the future gonna bring?
I'm not really sure yet. I'm still kind of undecided. I'm waiting to hear back from more schools and we'll see what happens.
So, when you look back, and were there moments where you were concerned like, oh-oh, we are in trouble here, we're really gonna have to pull it together? Or was it a pretty comfortable season throughout the year?
Well, in the beginning of the season, we had a lot of injuries. I was playing singles, which was a big change-up from the lineup. And my sister Mackenzie was also playing singles. And we usually both played doubles, so our singles lineup was a lot weaker and we ended up losing one of our matches at our first tournament against Blake. But we came back and beat them six-one at the end of the season. So, I feel like the nerves were greater in the beginning of the season and then we kind of like dissolved them.
And highlights for you for the season? What's one of those spots where, as a team, you really felt like it was a good experience for you?
Well, I felt it stayed during the finals. When we were cheering all of our teammates on, it was really fun.
And what was the moment like when you won the championship? I mean, is it still as special as always?
Yeah, definitely. I think especially this year, we all, at least the seniors, were really excited. They're, like, in the newspaper, they were talking about the shriek that, like, ran through baseline and it was really loud. And then it's kind of hard because one of the courts is in the back and you don't really know what's going on. So, when we all, like, ran to the back and then ran forward and you're, like, running all over trying to find everyone and, like, screaming and so it's really exciting.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you to introduce all your teammates and yourselves and then we will give you some recognition.
Okay. I am Megan Herring. I'm a senior. The other seniors are Jane Bro, Stephanie Gertson, Caroline Rui, Maria Remmel, Ali LaGorio, Greta Helmuth, and Maddie Cotter, and then my co-captain Morgan Marinovich. And then our juniors are Maddie Boyer and Bridget Klusner and Sophie Gaito. And then our sophomores are Michelle Ip, Mackenzie Marinovich, Kelly Rieger. And our ninth graders are Katie Engelking and Hannah Hankinson. And then we have two seventh graders, Sophie Ready and Margot Boyer.
And then we have Coach Paulson and Coach Forster. And with that, again, on behalf of the entire community, we congratulate you for a sixteen-year championship. Great careers. Thank you very much.
We have two individuals tonight that have requested to speak to the board. Reminder for all individuals are welcome to come speak to the board. Please limit their presentations to three minutes. Not sure who wants to go first. Rob Gooding would like to speak about equity and Lionel Dorville would like to speak about equity and accessibility here at Edina. Welcome to both of you. Three minutes each.
Good evening. I'm Rob Gooding.
Robbie, I'm sorry, you have to grab the mic, sorry.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, so, like I said, my name is Rob Gooding and I have a senior at your high school here, Edina. And I'm actually coming forth to this board this evening on equity issue. And I kind of, not necessarily challenging, but passing on an issue that is a direct violation of your policy for allowing middle school kids to participate without following your procedure that's stated in your policy six-twenty-eight-fourteen. And your basketball program, staff, I should say, could not communicate that that process took place before the actual tryout to allow that middle school athlete to participate and said they had some verbal dialogue with a former athletic director. Well, it clearly states in your policy that it needs to be assigned documentation and a process that takes a while. And before that child was allowed to participate in a tryout, he was supposed to have that process completed. And that didn't happen. And it was pretty much communicated that they just talked about it. And administration reiterated that, yeah, they talked about it with two different athletic directors, but they couldn't come up with any documentation that they followed your policy. And what happened with that is my son, who's a senior, was displaced from his, from participating on the actual varsity basketball team. From what administration and athletics communicated to me is that, yes, he made the top fifteen, but he was trying out for the top eight. So, he made the top fifteen, but he got cut from the top eight. In order for him to be a part of that team, he had to make the top eight, which, with my own experience as a head basketball varsity coach in Minnesota and also assistant college coach in a variety of states, it didn't make much sense to me. There's no equity there. So, moving on to Minnesota State High School rule violation, by law, three oh seven and three oh eight. Definitely three oh seven has been a problem in the basketball program, which it states you cannot require athletes to participate in camps, clinics, and other events, open gyms, in order to be considered for your team the following year or that season. It's a direct violation with the Minnesota State High School League, which I know this because I'm actual coach and I actually followed up again today and last week that it would be a violation from your basketball program. So, that's something that needs to be looked into as well. So, we have several different issues here amongst many more that I feel is not necessary to waste your time with at the moment. It's a lot more. Those are just policy pieces that are there that, I understand, has been set by the board and it's not equitable. And now, my child is suffering from not being a part of that team when he was told up to tryouts that, yes, you'll be fine from the basketball staff. That, yeah, your work is, you'll be on the team. Oh, I'm sorry, he had college offers.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lionel Dorville. Thank you for having me here. I have two family members, two nephews, who attend school at Edina High School right now, who have been there for the past two years now, who have excelled in sports but have struggled academically. And I have noticed there has been a progressive level of... I take that back. There has not been a progressive level of commitment to helping them succeed. From my opinion and my standpoint, I have noticed a number of kids and parents that I have been in communication with, particularly of color, that have had kids who have participated in sports and non-sports who have been struggling. And there has not been a progressive plan in place to engage parents, administrative, and teachers together to come up with a plan of action to help those kids succeed. These have been prevalent in my nephew's grades for the past two years. And this year, we finally have found some success in what we have been doing as a family to support them. And these have been an acceptable standpoint from high school administrators that I have talked to. And I define acceptable as no stop-gap measures in place to help them succeed further or beyond where they have been. I have not been contacted by one teacher. I have attended several open house meetings. And finally, I was contacted by one teacher after she realized my position and my job title. Then there was some follow-up from her. But they have not been follow-up from other teachers. And I have two nephews timed out by six teachers, so I take that a total of twelve teachers. For the past two years, I've sat down with administration and talked about some equity issues that I have noticed that has been troublesome, that all kids, or majority of kids who have, of color particularly, who have participated in sports, have found themselves struggling with no expectations of college and being college proficient. Currently, two high school all-stars and have been recognized as that, I notice now, and I'm speaking for my nephew, are struggling being college proficient and passing their SATs, which I find troubling, being that we just highlighted some success stories that I wish was the same for every kid who attended Edina High School. And in closing, I notice kids of color are put on a track of completion versus a track of being proficient and with that expectation that they would enroll in college-ready freshman classes versus remedial courses. And I just hope at some point we'll have a dialogue where we can address measures that aren't in place to help kids succeed, which I hope will come from this and future dialogues.
Thank you both for coming tonight. I know you've been in dialogue with Rick and the other administrators and we'll continue to do that.
We'll complete the follow-up and be in touch. And then we'll also report back to the board at our January board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our final presentation as young scholars.
Peter Hotney from Highlands Elementary and his team are here today to talk about a new program that, a relatively new program to our school district. And I'd ask Peter to shout it out.
Says his mic is on, so I'm taking...
It is. You're on, Peter.
True, with that little sign on it. Right, I'm here tonight and I'm actually not even gonna sit down. We just need three chairs, that's fine. And every couple of years, schools get an opportunity to present to the board and tonight, we're presenting a program that is district-wide. And we have two students with us tonight and Erica Watson, their teacher. And she's gonna tell you a little bit about young scholars. And this is Colin and Naomi are here.
All right, I'm so excited to share Highlands. I've worked there. This will be my eighth year at Highlands and I was at Concord four years prior to that. And these are some of my wonderful students that I've known for two years. And we have a slideshow here, so I'll kind of, we rehearsed a little bit. Do you want to, should we go, I don't know if we should go stand by it or...
Sure.
Sure. Because they're gonna share some stuff up here on here, so maybe we will. Can we do that, you guys? Okay, I made the title nurturing gifted potential in young learners because I believe a lot that it is about potential that these two have. And I would like them to show some amazing lessons that we've done. So, who do I, where's Al? Next slide?
Peter.
I don't know, maybe Peter. There you go. Okay. Here we have our first grader and she's Naomi and she's going to share next slide. We did a thinking skill... Where we worked on comparing and contrasting one day and we read a story Stella Luna. And after the reading, I had Naomi share with me how bats and birds are similar, how they are different, and what conclusion she could infer from the selection. And if we click here, we can go to, hopefully, technology works. Next slide. Her thinking, we used a graphic organizer. And if you click right there on comparing and contrasting, it should launch to her Google Doc that I scanned. Yeah, maybe maximize that. So, here is her, you can kind of see a small thumbprint. But I was gonna have her read it, was how we practiced. So, we are comparing a fruit bat to a bird and we're going to share how they are alike. Do you wanna read here?
They both have wings. They both fly. They both have talons, which are claws. They both eat food. They both are soft.
Right. And how did you know about talons again? What did you share with me?
I went to the Raptor Center.
Okay, so we'll scroll up and then we listed on our organizer how they're different. And here, do you wanna read how they are different?
Version. Bats see at night. Birds see in day. Perch. Bats hang upside down. Birds sit on branches. Food. Bats eat fruit. Birds eat bugs. Body. Bats have fur. Birds have feathers.
And here's her conclusion here when we wrapped it up. We talked about them being alike and different and then her conclusion.
Bats are mammals. Bats and birds are both alike.
So, we talked about how they could be alike and different. So, this is an example of what we do almost every week or every other week. We'll read a story and interpret it through the graphic organizer. So, she can organize and pick it. Do you have questions for her about this? We told them to leave my desk.
Naomi, if you could have one of those animals as a pet, which one would you choose and why?
A bird because they aren't as dangerous.
Okay, so then I think, Peter, if we minimize this Google Doc, I think we can go back to our slideshow and our next slide. And then I wanted to give an example of what we do in third grade. So, I'm gonna pass this off to Colin. And Colin here has been working, he's kind of gotten a little tuck crazy. So, I wanted to share some of his work that he's done. So, next slide. We had a lesson where we were doing the thinking skill of working on analogies. And Colin chose, he was only supposed to choose one book to read about the Statue of Liberty and of course Colin read two. And he then read the two and synthesized the information. And then he shared his thoughts. I told him that this is what the prompt was going to be. What does the monument symbolize? He had a selection of Liberty Bell or lots of choices. So, what does the monument symbolize? And what does it say about our beliefs, our values, and our culture in the United States? And I wanted to talk about it, but Colin wanted to write his thoughts down. So, he did, if you click the image, should launch. He made a glugster. And it might load up slow, but it should... He has made a bunch of glugsters, so you can ask questions about those later. But once it loads here... Here, Colin, why don't you read Statue of Liberty by Colin? Here, he wanted to share what he had learned.
It cost six hundred thousand dollars and the outside is made out of copper less than a fourth inch thick. More than two million people visit the statue each year. It weighs sixty-two thousand pounds. The Statue of Liberty is three hundred feet tall and one inch. The crown has twenty-five windows on it.
And then keep scrolling down here, here's a few more facts.
The Statue of Liberty was a birthday gift from France to the US. When first erected, the Statue of Liberty represented hope for a free and better life to immigrants who saw her upon arrival by ship in New York Harbor. She remains today a powerful symbol of hope and liberty for all who see her.
Then this doesn't, we couldn't get this to work when you click it, but he had, let's visit the Statue of Liberty. And I want him to talk a little bit about his thinking because I think this part shows a lot of his critical thinking. He had to search for a long time to find the video he wanted to put in here. And I want you to tell how you selected that one.
Well, the first time, it was like five minutes long and we picked it anyways. And when we tried it, it didn't work, so we went back on YouTube. We found a shorter version of the video and then we clicked on that and it worked.
So, he had to work also on size, I think, and fitting it in.
Yeah.
So, that also is just like a fun video that he, I think that's it then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then if we minimize that, I think we're to our last slide though. So, that's his glug. Oh, and then Colin has made lots of glugsters. How many do you know? I know.
Like twelve.
Yeah. He's kind of on a fever over it right now. So, okay, we can minimize here, Peter. And then back to our PowerPoint, I think it's just the end here. But, questions? Thank you for your time to share what we do when they come to see me. But are there any other questions then for Colin?
I have a question for Colin. You clearly do like glugsters.
You clearly do like logster. Why should the rest of us try it? What makes it a good way to share information?
Well, it's, you can, it's kind of hard to say. You can post information of stuff you learned from books or you could just do it for fun.
He always asks, can we do another research project? It looks like fun.
What's your guys' favorite thing about young scholars? What do you enjoy the most about the program?
Work sheets. I like worksheets.
Work sheets.
Yeah.
Words.
I like that I get to do stuff with Erica and that I have a lot of my friends there with me.
Erica, perhaps just for the audience who's listening at home and who might not understand what the young scholars program is, could you give us the brief flyover so that they would understand?
Right. I work with students in first, second, and third grade at Highlands who have potential and giftedness, so they have, we've noticed curiosity, we've noticed problem solving, we've noticed persistence, certain behaviors that are, that gifted students have and then we continue to try to nurture that, them, through them. And hopefully, the program like this keeps continuing and helps resolve a situation that is maybe at the higher grades, but right now it's at the elementary primary grades.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. And I do not have the tax levy on the logster.
You don't have a logster for us?
No. That would be new learning for me, but we'll see if that makes the topic a little more inviting and exciting. So, thank you, Al. As part of our annual discussion about our levy certification, one of the requirements is at your meeting in December, we do need to have an official presentation of the levy certification or the local levy that the school board will approve and give the public an opportunity to provide feedback. Several years back, this used to be a separate meeting, now we at least have the authority to combine it into one of our meetings. We also need to talk about the district budget at the same time, which is the next item on the agenda. Strategically placed that way so that we meet all the requirements for truth and taxation. What we'll go through tonight is the calendar, some basics in tax and school funding, major factors in the change in the levy this year, and the official dollar amount and some graphical analysis. And then we'll pause for questions on the levy side, if that's okay, and then we can go into the final budget pieces. Tax levy calendar officially starts in the summer when we provide information to the state, but you as a board see it for the first time in September with a preliminary or proposed levy certification. The only way the levy can change from September to December is through voter approval, which we did not have an election this year, or if the state makes some adjustments statewide in a formula of some sort or that kind of thing. Oftentimes, there's questions when a person's taxes go up or down, does that, how does that impact the school district? And basically, our formulas typically are based on our total revenue, which is a dollar amount per student in most cases, or in the example of health and safety expenditures, we have a certain type of expenditure, we need to qualify for that. And then the state sets formulas, it says X percent will be local levy and the remainder will be state aid. And so when those formulas change, state aid goes up or down proportionately, but our total revenue stays the same in terms of, that fluctuates more with student changes. And the way that we, our levies can change is either through voter approval or set by state formula. And a couple of ways with state formulas, they set a formula, or we either qualify by having certain types of expenditures that qualify for a specific type of levy funding that the state has authorized, such as health and safety or deferred maintenance or alternative facilities. Basically, there's two measures of our overall property wealth within the district and Edina has done very well with maintaining the overall property values within the last few years compared to what has occurred statewide. And that's what these two charts just show and I won't go into them in detail unless you have some questions. But again, in both calculations, Edina has done very well compared to the state average. Factors impacting taxes can be formula changes or issues driven at the state level, changes in property tax types of credits, that kind of thing that have occurred most recently, voter approvals of a referendum similar to what we had last fall, or a year ago in, last fall. And then local factors, changes in the property values locally. I often, I do often, usually about once a year, I'll get at least one phone call at this time, if not a couple, saying, my truth and taxation statement, what does the other levies mean? And this just helps explain that. We have the voter-approved levy referendums and then the levy set by state formula, operating capital, community service, and then other levies that are authorized based on expenditures. Like I said, health and safety, reemployment, leases, extended aid, disabled are just some examples. Basically, our levy, about just under 70% of our local levy is voter-approved and the remainder is the other local levies that I talked about. Factors contributing to our change this year, we are implementing the first year of our 10-year alternative facilities plan that you as a board approved in May. Some of that is on an annual basis through this levy system and the remainder is through alternative facilities bonding, both, which we have approved in that plan. We also refinanced our bonds a year ago and this is the first tax year that we will feel the implications or the savings of that refinancing, similar to refinancing your home. We've also retired or paid off some bonds on some previous construction. We do have, had a small amount of enrollment growth, which affects our levy, and then some prior year adjustments. This is a history or summary of our previous levies, voter-approved and other levies. I do need to make one clarification that on the debt service levy and the other levy way down below, second line from the bottom, I will need to update that. The debt service levy should actually be around, I'll check here, about $9 million. I noticed that when I was reviewing for the presentation. And this one, the other levy, second line from the bottom, should be more like $440,000. So the debt service levy should be a little over $7 million. To be more comparable, I just put one in the wrong place historically. So overall totals are fine and this is just a way of showing levy certification history by fund. And this also shows the change in district property taxes by various property categories for the last 12 years and you can say, see that it has been relatively stable. I'm here to report good news that the overall levy certification is going down this year because of the retirements of the bonds and the bond refinancing, combination of those pieces, it is going down. So here is estimated impact on some average home values. And here again, you can see a graphic of comparison of school district taxes in other school districts and our district in comparison of the average home of about $400,000. And this is the part where we'll get to the budget part of the presentation and rather than explain this graph, then I'll pause for questions and go to, then we'll go to the budget part of the presentation.
Margot, could you just explain the one chart in case somebody was wondering where we say property value decrease of 3% and we show decreases, but then one, if your house is 550, then it's an increase. Do you want to just explain that?
I believe, and I would have to check with the Hennepin County Auditor's Office. I did some review on that, when a home is over a half a million, it reaches a different tax category and it doesn't, there are some credits that no longer apply and I believe that's having an impact there because I looked at it again tonight and in the formulas, I can't see where that's occurring. So it has to be with the existing tax rates and tax credit laws. But I can follow up and let you know.
Great, thanks.
Other questions? I'm assuming there's no community questions?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to budget. So with the tax levy, there's also, it's a perfect time then to update our final budget also because the audit was approved. The end of October, we take that information, we take the fall enrollment counts, convert them to average daily membership and update information and it's a good time of year to give you a mid-year update and give you our final budget. Briefly go through the calendar and the process, funding history and our assumptions and where we spend our dollars. I won't go through all this because we've been going through it for a year, but this is kind of the, other than the audit, this is the end of the budgeting process. Now we will finish off the year and have the audit in the summer and report to you next fall the results. We did do some refinements last winter and spring in our budget process, particularly in capital and some tweaks in how we staff or allocate staffing supplies and equipment based on average daily membership. Historically, general ed funding has not kept pace with inflation. That's also out in the press quite a bit right now just because of the work of the Funding Task Force through the Department of Ed. Our enrollment, we are stable and, but growing slightly, about 1% a year or a little less than 1% a year in the out-years, but for 12, 13, about 1% over 11, 12. The assumptions, we did receive a 1% increase in funding this year in the general ed formula. We also received additional funding for literacy incentive aid. And expenditure assumptions are consistent with what we talked about last June when you approved the preliminary budget. Major changes there would be the enhancements that you approved most recently in November and then also carryovers, site carryovers for the supply allocations from one year to the other. Revenue changes, we did update for enrollment and if you recall in the October enrollment report that Mary and I presented, we were literally almost right on the, I think with in one or two students have projections. We have updated that. When it converted to pupil units, it was down just slightly because of the shift between elementary and secondary, but overall, just really, really close. And again, the enhancements and updated for staffing. Did have some increase in categorical revenues that also correlate to an increase in expense. Technology, this is information that was presented to you in June and I just kept that slide in there for your reference. These fund balance definitions are in there for your reference because we're still converting to that new fund balance definition for the last year and a half that is new from previous We do have out there in your board book and it will be out on the website, hopefully by the end of the week, a budget document that provides much more detail than this PowerPoint presentation, the charts and the graphs within that document summarize the various funds, the fund balances and breaks depending on which area you're looking at, summarizes revenues, expenditures and fund balances. There's an executive summary if you're looking for just the quick explanation without looking at a lot of spreadsheet stuff or calculations that explains where in revenues or expense, why is something going up or down or, you know, what's changed from the previous year. There's some summary spreadsheets or worksheets that provide four years' worth of history along with the current budget information. And then there's more detailed sorts on revenue and expenditures if somebody wants to take a deeper dive into the information. I'd be happy to go through those tonight, but I'm going to, considering I'm dominating quite a bit of time on different agendas tonight, I'll continue to go through in a summary format, but please know that you can ask questions and email me or as you go through the information. Revenues, the majority comes from the state, about 67%. The expenditures, we are labor-intensive, providing a service to students and so we spend about 80%, a little over 80% on staffing to provide the service to our students. Of that, certainly you would expect the majority are teachers, then clerical, custodian, drivers and paraprofessionals. And then a different sort on expenditures is by program and I think what's important to note here is that either instruction, direct instruction or instructional support is 80% of our budget and we're spending the money on students, which is what we should be doing. So then, all the detailed work, spreadsheets and worksheets in the budget document that's attached to your board book, this summarizes in a graphical sort of way. Provides our fund balance history, the dotted lines are either a 6% or 8% or 12% line in terms of fund balance targets and the red line is the base plan. So that's this budget in 12, 13 and then some estimates for 13, 14 moving forward with, assuming no new funding from the state. And what this shows, I think the good news here is that if you follow that red line to 13, 14, we're very close to the 8%. We'll need some minor or tweaking adjustments this winter, but we'll be able to stay around that 8% range. We have a 6% minimum plus the 2% cash flow and then moving into 14, 15, we'll continue to have conversations. We'll also know what will happen at the legislature. The other two lines are just what ifs, we did 500,000 worth of adjustments in the budget, what if we received a 1% increase in funding and did 500,000 worth of adjustments? Just shows you what happens if we tweak or do some things budget-wise, how it changes the trajectory of the financial position of the district. This is just for your reference right now, we still, I'll take December's enrollment and January's and combine that into updating average daily membership projections and then come forward to you at Finance and Facilities in January and the Board in January and February in terms of, you know, what we will do from a budget standpoint for 13, 14. And just again, reference information for you on why a fund balance is necessary and our next steps would be to update the long-range plan, have some tweaking or adjustments for 13, 14. But overall, it's looking good and our position is, financial position, as is the history in Edina, is financially stable while spending the resources on the students and excellence in both education and fiscal responsibility. Questions?
Did, when we went through the levy certification, did we actually, did I see a slide that actually showed that what the levy percentage was going up or down from last year?
You know, I believe in the presentation, there's not a slide that says the percentage. However, I can tell that because it's in the board book. So the levy is, and I'll remember to include that next year because that's an important note, especially when it's going down.
Exactly. It was going down. I wanted a big slide that said it's going down.
Maybe it is in board book, but I remember seeing something. You did put something together. It is, it's a more detailed. It is. It's a more detailed spreadsheet and it doesn't convert well into the PowerPoint. The levy is going down rounding $767,000 or 1.93% from the previous year and that was, Finance Committee did a great deal of work on trying to make sure as we implemented the 10-year plan that we also were having taxes go down and so taxpayers would feel the benefits of the refinancing on the bonds.
Good. I just wanted to make that clear that our levy was going down.
And just so the public knows, the 10-year plan is?
It's for our facilities, deferred maintenance in terms of mechanical, parking lots, roofs. We have 10 buildings and there isn't a direct source of funding on an annual basis for us to be able to meet those needs.
Thanks. Additional questions?
You do, it is in, the reference to the decrease in the levy is in the full board packet with background information on page 89.
Good, thank you.
Your charts are helpful. Thank you for the time that you spend to put together the PowerPoint presentations. It'd be tough to improve that in Logster. I think these, they're just, they're very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing if I can. Thank you to the Business Services and specifically Jim Gilligan for the help with the budget. That document that you have attached to your board book does take quite a bit of detailed processing to produce, so.
Additional questions?
There'll be action later tonight on both of these. So, thanks, Margot.
Thanks, Jim. Margot, you get to stay there for the Student Wellness Committee report.
Shift gears here and I'll ask Randy Smousel to join me and Mary Lombardi. So with, we usually give annually a report or update on the Student Wellness Committee's work and that's in June, but we really thought it might be important because of the recent changes federally with the food changes that it might be good to do a mid-year update and let you know what we're doing, not just on the food and nutrition side because of the federal regulations, but also on the student wellness side and give you a committee update.
So our committee includes high school representative and building parent representatives. We have an opportunity for members of the Wellness Committee from each building or each site to participate in this district committee. We have our elementary and secondary principals, our food and nutrition services staff, Mary, our health services coordinator, Betty Elliott, and then Margot and myself that participate in this district level committee. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lombardi, our supervisor of food and nutrition services, to give us an update on some of the federal changes that have happened with food.
Good evening. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act came into play this summer for us and I have to preface this by saying it's changing and we just got another change in the regulations on Friday. So I'm going to talk about where we are today, what that could change in the future. This is the first time in 15 years that there's been a major change in the food and nutrition program by USDA. So it's a change not only in what we serve, but how we serve it. And the emphasis is on increasing fruits and vegetables, whole grains, and then also looking at limiting the quantities of calories and other nutrients as well. Biggest change for us was students have to select a fruit or vegetable, which is a good thing, but a big change. So for 2012, 13, we've had calorie levels that we have to meet for the different grade groups. So each grade group has specific levels that have to meet both at the low end and the high end. We also have saturated fats and trans fat limitations. 50% of our grains have to be whole grains and this is one change that just occurred on Friday. We had to have minimum and maximums on the number of grains and the number of meats that we served in a week and that has been lifted for this, the rest of this year. Details still to be coming forth and whether that'll be long-term has not been decided. We've also had increased quantities of fruits and vegetables and again, they have to take a fruit or vegetable. The other thing on the vegetable side is we have to show that we offer dark green, red and orange, the legumes and also the starchy vegetables in our menus every week. And this just gives examples of the different vegetable groups that you have to have in your menus every week and show that you're serving the proper quantities for those students that are by age groups again. We have a food-based offer versus serve program. So students are offered all five food group categories and they have to pick three or in other words, they can decline two of the five groups, but they have to choose three and one of those have to be a fruit or vegetable. We try to get students to pick all five and follow the My Plate program when they're, when we teach classes to them. We also have to make sure again that they're offered quantities of fruits and vegetables. They can take smaller portions of fruits and vegetables in addition to their half-cup portion. On this slide, we're highlighting some of the things that have changed for us this year. A good thing with the fruits and vegetables, if we, the first two months of the year compared to last year, we served 2,000 more pounds of produce from our fresh produce company. Again, because they have to take a fruit or vegetable, that's an increase and 57 cases more in locally grown produce this year. In the meat category, we've no longer buying commodity beef. So we're getting beef that's got less additives, less preservatives in it and we'll be expanding that to the older grade levels this year. We started last year in elementary schools. We're also decreasing processed foods like chicken patties. We're doing some grilled chicken in both the elementary and the middle schools. And then we're offering some new kind of protein foods like yogurt parfaits, cheese and cracker plates, some meat alternatives versus just meats. Also, the processed foods is we continue and we'll have a slide on this later, but we're looking at making more of our things. Like we make our quesadillas instead of buying them. We make macaroni cheese instead of buying it like we did in the past. And then the grain category, we're doing 100% whole grain pastas. We've been moving slowly towards that over the last few years, but now we're at 100% and again, we have more grains in buns, pancakes, French toast sticks and some of the other tortillas, other grain products. We work closely with the Wellness Committee in trying to continuously improve what we offer to the students, healthy eating in all the categories and as well as looking at just not what we serve in the regular meals, but in our snacks and beverages as well. And then we've been looking at other school districts around the country and how can we be one of the best in the country in what we're offering for healthy students' foods. And this slide we put together, it shows how we're decreasing processed foods over the last few years. So comparing from October to October to October, the percent that we've decreased in the processed foods. We'll be setting goals with the Wellness Committee to get to that final point that we're going to want in the year of 2014, 15. By the end of the year, we hope to decrease again by another 5% of processed foods that we serve.
And what's the goal that we're looking at for 2014, 15? What's our end goal?
We're still finalizing that goal at this point in time, so we haven't come to a final conclusion yet, but we will be working on that in January and February meetings to make that final decision of where we want to be at. And this slide talks about our breakfast program, just to highlight, we started in 2008 and that's when one of our goals is to increase that and we're going to, for the first time this year, probably exceed the 20,000 meals in a year, mostly because we have two schools, elementary schools, that we now offer breakfast early for students who come to class to have before school starts. So that's really made an increase in our meals for this year.
I think one important thing to note before we get on to Health Services and Student Wellness is that of 100 and, or 700 certifications or potential certifications in Minnesota for the federal program, only 155 at to date have been certified. Others have applications in and some are still processing. So that's certainly a credit to Mary and her staff because you have to comply not only with the food, but also the record-keeping requirements. On Health Services and Student Wellness, we continue to educate students on hand washing and so we have less illnesses and also immunizations to make sure that our students are covered and protected from diseases.
Terms of our health curriculum, we're providing information about HIV prevention, human sexuality, sexually transmitted disease prevention. And our health office has been active in creating activities to promote healthy student response to stress. We saw several students early in the board meeting talking about academic excellence, talking about their academic performance, talking about their athletic performance and the amount of stress that is associated with those events can be enormous for kids. So we're very interested and have worked with our health office to create tips for students on how to reduce stress in their lives, whether it's calming activities or being able to do deep breathing types of activities, just different things to help them be aware that they have this stress and learn how to manage that as a student in our system.
We also do, Betty Elliott, Health Services, or the district nurse, does come to Safety Committee meetings to update on student injuries on a monthly basis. And so that group takes a look at, is there anything that from an education standpoint or just even a facility standpoint, what types of injuries are we having? Do we need to work with instructional staff, support staff, custodial staff, whomever, to help monitor injuries and be proactive injury prevention and that kind of thing?
We have met with our physical education staff to look at the types of fitness data we want to track long-term, including the Presidential Fitness Assessment. And we also have many PE teachers that organize physical activities for a good cause. In terms of mental health, many lessons being developed around bullying prevention, around conflict resolution and developing strategies for students to deal with some of those tough moments in life, whether it's grieving for a lost loved one or dealing with a death or some of the many issues that students have around friendships. But just being able to deal with conflict, being able to deal with some of those tough emotional issues. Also in terms of curriculum, we have outdoor science lessons that are embedded in our curriculum at every grade level. Students see themselves as part of a larger ecosystem, part of a larger whole. So it's kind of that connection with nature. And many classrooms have the bouncy bolts, which exercise those core muscle groups that are good for the, our physical fitness and help students focus better and concentrate more in class. And then we often do movement and stretching breaks, which encourages that blood flow and helps students be focused in the classrooms as well.
So to summarize with our Student Wellness Committee, we started our year off reviewing the survey, the satisfaction survey results from the spring. We had a couple of questions on there. It's the parent satisfaction results. So there's variety of curriculum or just experience questions regarding student and parent experiences within the district and two of those questions were related to food and nutrition. Just to quickly summarize, the two key messages we received out of there is parents are supportive. There was about 1,300 responses. There is support for reducing processed foods in our menu items. So as a result, you are already, you've seen some previous results on that and we are continuing that work. And also just information that we, maybe there's just a communication improvement that we need to make so that people clearly understand what we are offering and the changes in the guidelines. And I think it's really exciting that we are now, have combined the food and nutrition and wellness because our conversations at our meeting, our meetings are really about overall student wellness and that's been really exciting. So, do you want to talk about the agendas or you want me? Okay, so our agenda is we've brainstormed with the team of committee and have talked about how we'll structure our agenda and we're going, we will make sure that there's a nutrition component, but also a student wellness component. We have brought in guest speakers and will continue to as needed. One was a lifetime nutritionist and we also have set up information in Google Docs so we can provide even, similar to you as a board, are looking at articles, that kind of thing, anything related to our committee's work and update on federal requirements. We did take a Southview Middle School tour and our most recent meeting, we discussed and brainstormed about where have we been and where are we headed. And this is the conversation we started at our last meeting and will continue it, I would guess for more than one meeting, continue on throughout the year. But where are we headed that will help us define, for example, Kathy, the question you asked Mary of, what is that level we're working towards? That we want to get that information and that feedback from the committee.
So as we generate that input through this group, it'll be an opportunity to, through a process, take that back to other staff, other parents and determine, as Margot said, where are we going next? And through that process of soliciting that input, be able to establish some goals for where this Wellness Committee wants to head and what we want to accomplish.
And I think some of the things we've talked about is incremental changes and sustainable changes and we're having some good discussions about it.
Got a question about, you know, obviously when you're switching to different foods to meet the requirements, it's a change in cost. How is that being accounted for at this point or are we going to see some adjustments come spring?
Well, that is a future agenda item later tonight. The federal government has acknowledged that there is an increase in cost because some of the change to the requirements, the food to meet is more costly. So we, because we work at one of the 155 that have been certified now, we do qualify as of October 1st for an additional six cents per reimbursable lunch. That's not for every lunch for, and basically that's our free and reduced lunch count. And so that's later on the agenda item because we need to adjust our contract accordingly because the expense is on the food-related side of the contract and also the reporting processing, so.
I'm curious what kind of reaction we're getting from students. Are they eating the better food that we're serving them? Are they throwing it away? I'm just, I'm the realist, I suppose.
That's a good question. We know that they're taking more and we've always had pretty good vegetable and fruit eaters in our district, so we've been fortunate in that category. The way we can look at what's being thrown away is because we compost, we do get pounds of waste and we'll get that at the end of the quarter. So we'll be able to compare from last, this year to last year, see if we see any difference in that compost waste that we see. It's not a real hard fact, but it's a good, a pretty good measurement of what's going into the garbage. Feedback has not been, it was a learning experience from them to learn that they had to take a fruit or vegetable. I would say the biggest change probably is when the limitation on the grains, which now is going to be lifted. So we'll be relooking at that. So that was probably the issue in the middle school and high school, especially for boys, that they had this limit in the size of the buns and the size of the big hoagies that were smaller than they were in previous years. But we'll be taking a look at that again. We still do have to stay in the calorie limits, so we have to do some recalculations on those.
Do we see students bringing more food from home? I mean, are they packing lunches? Do we see, I mean, do you even take, I mean, it's not our job. Do we even take a look at that?
We actually have an increase in our reimbursable meals so far this year compared to last year, about 7% increase. So we haven't seen a decline at all.
I've heard concern that some kids who, for whatever reason, require more calories, that there's some concern that the calories have been cut back, save for athletes and such. What kind of feedback or what do you have in regard to that?
That is probably the biggest concern around the country is that calorie level for those kids that are very active. And kids can supplement with à la carte, which we do have a lot of here, but I think that's going to be something in the future that's going to be looked at again. It is, they are guidelines that are set based on the average student for that age group. So right now, they are set that way, but I think there's going to be some relooking at that in the future.
And one other question. Some of the kids at Southview, when I was at a site council meeting, were expressing concerns that some of the new rules about what to take and not to take have caused confusion and actually it's the parents on the back end who see that when, you know, the debit is taken from the account and it's more than what they had anticipated. How are we communicating that better for our kids? How are we communicating that better for our kids?
We do have a video on the website that students can watch, and we recommend teachers show it in class on how to do that. We also have signs. We also have things going on the TV screen in the cafeteria. We'd love to come and talk to Southview students if they'd like us to and do some education. We have done Valley View classes for students specifically about how to follow the new guidelines. We'd be happy to do that if they'd like us to.
Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? Thank you all.
Thank you. We might also add that the finance facilities committee did meet with a group of community members, again, with some of the same goals in mind of how we can create healthier meals for our young people and have a follow-up actions from that dialogue, and we'll bring that back to the wellness committee. Again, a lot of interest in making sure our kids are getting the right foods and getting the right nutrition as they advance their learning.
Thank you. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Rick, could you please walk us through?
Yes, we have personnel recommendations. I do want to note in those recommendations that Julie Diet, our colleague in arms here who have been a great asset for us over the many years, is going to be retiring effective January 2nd. We congratulate her and thank her for her services. Also, our expendables, expenditures for December are listed. We have a student teaching agreement with Liberty University, a variety of commendations that we talked about earlier today, as well as gifts that we always recognize for the great support our community gives our schools. And that would conclude the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Rick. Any items in the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove? Any discussion? Seeing none?
Wait, I had a couple of quick questions. On the expenditures, is it possible in the future to get a sort that's done by either vendor or dollar amount as opposed to just, I think, the current sort? Does the system allow you to sort it differently?
I don't know that, but I'll check.
Okay. So if it's possible, I'd like to see an expenditure sort by highest to lowest and then also a sort by vendor. And then I had a question about student-teacher agreements. Do we have a template that we use as a district that applies to all these student-teacher agreements? Because it seems like they vary every time we sign a new one.
So that's a good question. I'm not sure, but I can certainly check on that and get back to the board. I know that as agreements expire, we will come back and renew those agreements. We have some universities, of course, that we haven't had agreements with, so we bring those to the board. But if we want to put that into a template format moving forward, we can certainly do that.
There just doesn't seem to be any uniformity, and this last one here has a link to a website that lists what our responsibilities are, and I tried to link to that website and I wasn't sure where to go from there. So I think we probably want to make sure we have a clear understanding of what we're signing up for.
Great. We're still on the consent agenda. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. We're on to our action portion of this evening's meeting. First item is the final tax levy payable, tax levy for 2012 payable 2013. Can I have a motion, please?
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final tax levy, which is a 1.93% decrease. We had a presentation earlier this evening. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving the final tax levy for 2012 payable 2013, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item is our 2012-2013 final budget. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the 2012-2013 final budget. Any discussion? Also had a presentation this evening. Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item is our property liability insurance. Insurance contract for 2013 to W R M. Winning award was 268, 752. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We did have solicit quotes from seven companies. However, six companies declined to quote for a variety of reasons to include property values in terms of, we have a large, I mean, we're a larger district and their market would be smaller total property values, not competitive pricing or the current district losses. Also to note, we are switching the renewal here to January 1. This was previously on a February 1. We're gradually trying to move towards that with our insurance policies. And even though the premium is a 26% increase, it is still below the 2007 level of premium for property liability. And we'll continue to work and research options for us to keep this as low as possible. And this did go through finance and facilities committee.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the insurance liability, the property liability insurance, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next up, we have our food service management contract amended. We had the presentation earlier this evening where it was mentioned, the six cents per reimbursable meal effective October 2012. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Margot, in case someone wasn't paying attention before, can you please explain this?
Certainly. That never happens. So the federal requirements for the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act require different food, as we just learned in our presentation, requirements to serve the students, which the federal government has deemed or recognized the fact that it's more costly. And so through a rigorous application process to make sure, ensure that we are meeting those requirements, we have been approved and now qualify for an additional six cents per reimbursable meal, acknowledging that increased cost. Because we contract for our food services program, that cost is really borne by the contractor because they purchased the food on behalf of the district. So that's what this approval is for.
So to clarify, this is only for free and to reduce meals?
Right.
And so individuals paying for meals will not see a different, a change in their costs?
Yeah, and this is not a parent cost change. It is merely a change to our contract with the food service provider. And the reimbursement to them is only for the number of reimbursable meals, it's not for all meals.
Correct.
But is it, and this is a question too I could have asked earlier during the presentation, but is it true that the cost is up for all meals because of the change in the guidelines? That would be true, but as finance committee discussed, the recommendation was for reimbursable meals because that's where the funding is.
Okay.
Additional discussion, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next up, we got our co-branded customized website and technology support services agreement. An emotion?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the district entering a service agreement for a web store and additional technical services from Best Buy. Been working on this one for a while. A little more background, Steve?
Certainly. Thank you. The district is currently piloting initiative we call an e-learning square, which looks to pair our excellent teachers with personal technology devices in the hands of our students. We're really seeing a transformation of how technology devices in the hands of our students really create this environment that has an impact that is exponential towards teaching and learning. In order to help facilitate that, we're looking at ways that we can help provide technology to our families. This co-branded web store with Best Buy will allow our ninth-grade families to purchase technology at significantly reduced pricing as well as receive technical support within our buildings. And so our students will be able to access technical support, be able to acquire a technology device that they're able to bring into the school and use that as anywhere, anytime learning.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments?
Just like I, this is one of the first private-public ventures in technology that has occurred, we believe, nationally. And commend Steve and Susan and Randy and the many people involved, Margot, for all their work, and the people of Best Buy for wanting this partnership to work. It's been a big effort. We're excited about the potential. We're going to pilot because we think it's wise to pilot a new initiative like this. But we really do believe that this is going to be the future for not only Edina but for other districts as well, and we think we're going to create some wonderful opportunities for our student learners and our staff.
Thanks, Rick. Additional questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving the co-branded customized web store and technology support services agreement, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item is course offering changes at Edina High School for 2013, 2014. You had a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the following course changes, advanced placement calculus, B C and pre-calculus, eliminate practice of scheduling segregated 10th grade section.
Can we combine, can I make a motion?
Certainly can.
To combine F through I, which is the discontinued changes and new courses. I'm making a motion to combine.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded to combine items F through I, which is course offering changes at Edina High School, courses to be discontinued, course description changes at secondary schools and new courses at Edina Secondary Schools. Is there a second?
Yeah, there was.
There was a second. Discussion? All those in favor of combining those items, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. We have a motion on the floor that has been amended to include all those items. Discussion?
Randy, are there, there are no changes from last month when we saw these proposals? Is that correct?
Correct. The only clarification I made is around that pre-calculus, that we are actually eliminating that practice of scheduling that separate section for 10th grade students.
But what we did, but so we discussed at the last, teaching and learning, and what we discussed at the last board meeting, and that's what we're voting on tonight.
Correct.
Okay. So any additional discussion? The courses that are discontinued are individual fitness, dual sports, and personal fitness wellness. Like was mentioned, we've reviewed these previously. And also, we've got some course description changes at both the high school and Southview and Valley View. And the new courses are concert orchestra at the high school and Southview Valley View, green architecture, part of Project Lead the Way. Additional discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the combined motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next up, we have the schedule review of 200 series policy, school board. Can I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule review of the 200 series policy school board.
Randy, could I make a motion to combine J, K, and L as they all refer to the series 200 policies?
We have a motion on the floor. We'll amend it to include those two additional items. We've got a motion and a second to amend. Any discussion regarding the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. This item is amended. We do have it on the floor. Discussion? We've seen these all before. Any changes since we saw them last?
Yes, some grammatical, some changing so that they read, they were clear to understand, and then some to change so that they reflected what we actually do, you know, current procedure. We did miss one correction that we made at the last policy committee meeting, and I unfortunately just noticed it this afternoon. I apologize for not bringing it to everyone's attention sooner, but in policy 216 on page 181, subsection 3A, where it says the school board may appoint a member to represent the school board, it should say a school board or community member, and that language should be inserted there, and it just isn't. But that's a minor correction to pick up.
We'll accept it as a friendly amendment. Any additional questions, comments, discussions? A lot of work here again. Thank you all. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving both the review and also the rescinded policies, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. For action this evening, we do have a discussion item around the calendar, which has created some interest in the community. Where do we start? Gwen?
Yes, good evening. I've had the great pleasure of working with a committee of folks over the last couple of months. The committee has been comprised of administrators, teachers, and parents across the school district from early childhood through high school. And there are a number of changes that have been proposed to you. And one, before I get to those proposed changes, we had some parameters that we needed to abide by, and some of the parameters included being consistent across the district for non-student days. We also were, this year we did a pilot for conferences, for fall and spring conferences, and five of our schools did a pilot in which they worked with their staff teams and parent council to create a schedule that was more conducive for their parents and families. So that is seeming to work, and we are proposing to move forward with having individual school calendars, schedules for conferences in the spring and fall beginning next school year. Last year, the state changed the rules and said that instead of looking at the number of days students are in school, we needed to look at the number of hours. And so our hours are consistent this year or the coming year with what is present this year. So we are not increasing the number of days or the hours, but they are listed there, and all are above the state minimum requirement. And then finally, the teacher's contractual day is 100, contractual year is 184 days, and so that is consistent. And then as we continued working, we looked at other modifications, and one is that we have been toying with the idea of starting school before Labor Day. And in light of the fact that we have $10 million worth of construction that will begin next school year and will continue for the next 10 years, that would allow us to begin school before Labor Day. The state requirement is that if you have at least $400,000 worth of construction, you may start school prior to Labor Day. And we were far beyond the minimum requirement for that. And the other thing that we have been looking at is how can we provide more time for our teachers to meet in small groups with their professional learning communities? How could we provide more time for our teachers to have time to analyze the data and meet in teams? And so what we did was we added five minutes to the school day, which then allowed us several more hours over the course of the year, and that allowed us to look at having late starts and early or early releases. With all of this information, our committee put together three options for staff to take a look at and vote on, and option one ended up being the final option that was selected, which is before you. I'm going to stop there and see if there are questions.
Questions, anybody?
Yes. Go ahead, Lenny.
In terms of starting before Labor Day, what's the primary objective?
In terms of starting before Labor Day, what's the primary objective?
I think there are a couple of primary objectives. One is that allows us to work with our, with the construction company. When you need more time, not necessarily at the very first year, but the second year, hopefully, we will have a nice spring and there, it will be longer time for the construction to be completed. Another is that we have been looking at if we could have more time for our students to prepare for AP tests and other standardized tests in the spring. That would also be a benefit for our students as well.
So, under the new schedule, how many extra days of education do we pick up prior to those AP or the spring exams?
There are five days, because the plan that was selected was that students would begin the Monday before Labor Day.
But we start five days earlier, but then it looks like we've increased the length of the winter holiday. And so, we're giving back some of those instruction days.
We actually haven't increased the winter holiday in comparison to previous years. In comparison to this current year, yes, there are more days. But in previous years, we have had two weeks of winter break. And when we look at how many days students are in school prior to the AP tests and the standardized tests that are in the spring, it's still five more days if you exclude this current year. And the winters, winter break seems to vary from year to year depending on lots of other factors.
And so, if you compare it to this year, do you pick up like one or two days? Is that?
Yes.
So, what were the? Go ahead. Could you confirm, when you just, when you talk about late starts and early releases, how many hours, minutes is that for parents?
We're looking at a total of about two hours. And for our students, in order to either come to school two hours later or be excused two hours early. And we are currently working Val and Meg. And I had a meeting last week because we're working with Kids Club to offer some kind of support for families where they have to work, but their children would either come to school late or be released early.
Okay, that is a, that is a concern, particularly for our elementary-age parents or kids with elementary, for those parents who make it work with the start time at the time that it is.
We're quite confident that we'll be able to offer some kind of program.
Great.
We're actually meeting in just a couple of weeks.
Okay. My, my other concern on the late start, early release, I know that we've garnered the time from the five minutes additional time put into a day. My challenge back would be five minutes, you know, the math all works out, but are we, will we gain that instructional time in the classroom with only five minutes in a day versus the, in the end, what, probably about eight hours of time that students will not be getting in the classroom? You know, will we gain that back with those five minutes? Or will those just be, you know, five minutes that are kind of lost in the day?
Well, we hope that would be, that we would gain those, those extra minutes. That's, that was definitely our intention. And the committee looked at that closely, looked at not only the adding the five minutes, but also what the student day looks like.
Okay.
If I could add my, to clarify, my understanding on the use of the time with early release, late start, is that we're also gaining time for data review, teacher training, and so forth, so that we can hopefully enrich the instruction? That is the intent for the early?
That is absolutely the intent, yes.
We've certainly already, just from the buzz in the community, had a fair amount of feedback from people who are opposed to the pre-Labor Day start. Have we got plans for a communication as to what's good about this? And why we're doing it beyond the construction piece, which I think we need to focus on learning for our community. And I think it does have to do with learning, but I'm not sure that's coming across clearly enough.
Sure, and I would like to defer to Susan, who's working on a communic- we've been talking about a communication plan and getting the word out to families as early as possible. Not only what the calendar looks like, but the reasons for the changes.
Yeah, certainly that. Certainly, that would be, the goal would be to articulate the rationale behind it. To this point, we've just sort of been loosely talking about it because we were waiting for that final proposal to be brought forward. From the state statute point of view, it's a focus on the construction. But we also know that there is a desire in this community for more instructional time. And so, we would be looking at messaging that would complement both of those for the reasons of construction statute allowing us to do it. But we really do believe that this is the right thing to do for student learning.
The other two proposals that were not approved by staff, were there any big differences in those two from the one that we're seeing here?
I would say the primary, there are a couple of primary differences between the calendar that was selected and the other two. One was that school may have started, for students, may have started on Tuesday prior to Labor Day. Another plan started Wednesday prior to Labor Day. We also looked at only one early release and one late start in one of the models. We looked at adding professional development time in other parts of the calendar as opposed to front-loading, so to speak, in August, the way we have traditionally done it for teachers, but spreading the professional development days throughout the calendar.
But in all the discussions, was the sentiment that they wanted to put back a two-week winter break? Since we've now moved over the last two years to a shorter winter break, picking up more instructional days, and now if we're moving to a pre-Labor Day start to push, pick up more instructional days, was there any thinking to continue the shorter winter break and the pre-Labor Day start to really give us a nice grouping of more instructional days? So, I'm just wondering, was that discussed or was?
And we did discuss if we should have, continue with the week and a half, so to speak, of winter break. And looking at how New Year's Day falls and some other days, it seemed to make more sense to stick, to go back to the two weeks. We also had a lot of input and pressure from people to say, please reconsider the two weeks that we've traditionally had because that was what families had been anticipating and planning on for many years as well. So, but we did look at both.
Two things, Susan, I think it would be great if we had like, maybe a questions and answer, like, or somewhere on the website, because, you know, from the emails we get, there's a misunderstanding that we are shortening the summer vacation, which we're not, we're just shifting the time. So, that would be, for example, one of the things that we need to clarify. And secondly, I think, I think there might be a misunderstanding because the teachers have already seen the options and maybe voted on them. There might be some misunderstanding in the community that, that this decision has been made without consulting with the community. So, I think we need to also make sure that we laid out that the board has not voted on it, that we are welcoming input from the community. But, yeah, we did ask the teachers to vote so that there will be a proposal before the board.
So, we will do that.
So, the people that were pushing for a longer winter break, did they understand that they were trading that for an earlier start?
They were in, they realized that they were trading it possibly either for an earlier start or possibly for a longer school year, where school would not get out until later in June. And there was still much interest in having a two-week winter break.
And just so that the public knows that's watching this, we're, both the next two years will actually be out in May, rather than going into June at all, correct?
Correct. That's for students, yes.
For students, of course.
Additional discussion?
And the calendar does result in the same number of school days for the kids?
Yes, it does.
I would add, what may be helpful for communication with the public, it's my understanding, based on past presentations for commencement, that the earlier release date in the spring may ease some of the calendaring of commencement, if that's correct.
Yes, I have been in communication with Jenny Johnson at the high school and shared all three options with her. So, and she has been in communication with the facility, with Target Center, to look at possibly reserving dates. So, she was, she's prepared.
But I guess of it, I'd also heard from previous discussions with Jenny and with Dr. Locklear, is that we may have more choices on venues, not that that will change anything in the 1314 year, because I know this takes advanced planning, but that some of the limitations on commencement were the fact that it was so much later in June, we had limited venue options.
That is true, and this will now open it up a little bit. You're correct.
So, the comment was made that this isn't done, but what's the reality if there was discussion or alternatives or debate around this issue? Are we not under a pretty short leash here as far as really needing to make things happen for next fall, as far as scheduling?
Randy, are you referring to if the decision is delayed possibly?
Yes, yeah.
If the decision is delayed, I believe the policy says that a calendar decision needs to be made within six months of when school begins. And so, you would, so you do have some leeway.
Okay.
I think the key one for a lot of families is the school start time, because they can lock in on childcare and as it relates to their flex benefits and some of that. But this is new, and I think we want to make sure, again, that we have some conversation before the board moves forward with this. And we commend the Calendar Committee for taking on this initiative to take a look differently at time. I think we're going to continue to see time evolving. I think the state's going to have to take it on as well with some of the flip classroom and the online experiences are going on. And so, it's a good time to be talking about time.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you, Gwen. Additional items?
From an information standpoint? Are you moving us forward?
Whatever you have.
Yeah, also, from information standpoint, we do have some policies. We've got the enrollment, obviously, but we have some policies where some appendixes were modified in minor ways. One I do want to call attention to the board was under our graduation requirements. In the appendix, we had a misprint or a typo that was put into practice, actually, where we were having 42 credit requirements versus 43. That's being addressed, and it, to be honest with you, our students don't seek the minimum. And so, we just have to make sure that that amendment is made in the appendix. And then, our administration is working with families who have students in the system to make sure that we do align with what the state statute does require, which was placed in the policy. So, it's just an adjustment, but it was also a procedural adjustment we're taking care of at the district level as well. And that would kind of cover the appendix areas as far as leadership announcements, just two items. One, make the public aware that last Friday, the School Board met with the Student Council at the high school and had a very good conversation around the use of technology, as well as the, some of the changes that have been made in our English 10 class, and then just some of the work that our Student Council does in leadership. And it's always a good time for, I think, the board, I find it very insightful, to spend some time with our students and see how reflective they are and how their drive and strive for us really to provide the best learning possible for all students was, was once again displayed. The other piece I'd like to mention, then, December 17th, we have a dialogue going with our local state-elected officials will be joining us for a conversation. I believe that begins at 5:30? 5:30, right in the Edina Community Center. And we will keep our community informed as we move into a legislative session. There's a lot of things happening this 2013 that potentially could happen, and we'll make sure our voices are heard for our young people. And that would conclude the leadership update.
Thank you, Rick. Any other additional items or announcements? Seeing none, at this time, we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
So, moved and second to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned.